I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is reorganization of the committee. Once the committee is reorganized and has a chair, I will turn the rest of the organization and meeting over to the chair. But right now, we are looking for a nomination for Chair of the School Committee.
I will nominate Mackenzie for Chair of School Committee.
Mackenzie who?
Bailey.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Sorry.
All in favor of Mackenzie as Chair of the Irving School Committee, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Okay. Mackenzie, the meeting is now reversed.
All right. Thank you. Um, I would like to just say something first and then I think there was others that wanted to. So, um, so thank you for that. Uh, that was a little bit unexpected. Um, I just wanted just to say formally on camera that I appreciated being actually formally elected to the school committee. So I appreciate everybody that came out and voted and I'm happy to still be sitting here. I'm now happy to be Chair. Um, and I look forward to the next year. Um, we've got some work to do, but I'm up for the challenge and I look forward to it. So, thank you, everybody who voted and, um, and thanks for, for keeping me on here.
Yeah, I do have a letter. Um, I just had some things that I kind of wanted to get off my chest.
And then we'll do public hearing.
Okay. Well, we have the reorganization arrest. You want to do that first or?
Oh, yeah, we can do that all at once. Yeah, no, that's fine. We can do it all at once. Yep, yep. I just do you. Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, so I just wanted to start off the meeting by addressing a few things. Um, we are, I believe, still in an unfortunate situation. Um, I know town meeting, the voters spoke by passing the four million dollar budget for 125 students. I feel that is still not being fiscally responsible. Um, since taking over Chairperson a year and a half ago, um, I listened to numerous community members, parents and staff. Anytime I was approached with an issue, along with my own concerns, I would bring them to the superintendent. Unfortunately, the chain of command isn't working because no action was taken. I do not believe more money on a budget is the answer. Currently, our MCAS scores are much lower than our surrounding districts. Um, one has to wonder why. I do not place a high value on standardized testing, but they are an indicator, an indicator that we need to do something different. The other schools are currently operating on a much lower budget and still getting the job done. According to FY22 DSE data, we spent thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and sixteen cents per pupil. Our union counterparts spend, shoots varies per pupil is twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. New Salem Wendell is twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. And Lover is twenty-one thousand, twenty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. The state average is nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixteen cents. One of my concerns is the apparent downhill slide of our school atmosphere. I understand that the school, the culture in this building is not what it once was. Our staff is divided and it is affecting our students' education. As a previous educator, I have worked with many administrators that have created collaborative culture and have worked with those who have not. The latter is not, is an unpleasant work experience, which we currently are in, in Irving. Uh, it starts from the top down and I believe we are in desperate need of some new administration. Thank you.
The other chairs, the other?
Yep. Yeah, we're gonna do those all at once. So, um, we're gonna finish reorganizing and then we'll move into public hearings. So we need to do, we need to have, um, yeah, two hundred. Thanks. Thanks. Okay. So we need to have a secretary or slash vice chair. We need to have a Union 28 representative. We need a budget and personnel subcommittee members, Irving Policy Committee members, capital planning, collaborative representatives, SIC bank, regionalization, and I guess that's it. So, now that you know the full spectrum, um, do we have a nomination for Secretary Vice Chair?
Well, vice chair is different from secretary, yeah.
Well, it's one, yeah, it's kind of one.
Okay. Oh, okay. Yep.
Would anybody like to do that position?
Well, I, I've done it before. I'll do it again. So if someone nominates me.
Well, you nominate yourself too.
I can't nominate myself.
Okay. I will nominate Eric to be Secretary Vice Chair. Anybody else? Are you interested in that yet?
That's okay. We have a nomination in a second. I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So then we need a Union 28 representative.
We need three elected representatives and one needs to be the Chair.
Okay. So we need two other representatives for Union 28. Dave, you're way far down there, but I'm still looking at you.
I'm, for Union 28, Mackenzie, since you're Chair.
Yep. So we need two others.
You had been in the past, right? I'll nominate Eric as a Union 28 representative.
Anybody want to second that?
Second it.
Dave, are you interested in that at all? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll nominate Dave as the third.
Okay. We do it all together. Is that all right? All right. So all in favor of David and Eric?
Aye.
Aye.
So Budget and Personnel Subcommittee, um, one member.
From the Joint Supervisory Committee, so one of the three that's elected.
I'm already Chair of the Budget Personnel Committee, so.
So I'll nominate Eric.
Thanks a lot.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Way to go, Scott.
All right. Irving Policy Committee. We need two. All right. So we have Caitlin and Dave. Okay. Uh, I'll second nominations for Caitlin and Dave. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, capital planning?
Jen?
Yeah. Sure.
Okay. Um, I'll, you gonna nominate?
I'll nominate Jen.
I'll second. Anybody else have any interest in it? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, collaborative representative?
I will take that back if I can get rid of the region session. No, we're not trading. No, it's trading.
I'll nominate Caitlin to be our collaborative representative.
I will point out, this is the only one that, that serves a small meal, so it's a good one.
Is it in person now?
Well, no, I think it's virtual now.
Oh, no. It is in person.
Oh, it's in person now?
Oh.
I had a lovely meal.
Did you?
Lovely.
Well, you can do Zoom, you can do virtual as well.
Okay.
You don't get the food though. Um, did anybody second?
Second.
All right. So all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Uh, SIC bank, we need two members. I would like to be on the SIC bank.
I can be if you want me to.
Okay. Well, if anyone else wants.
I don't mind. I just only have one committee, but unless, I don't want to be away from here.
Nope. Nope. You can, all right. Okay. So I nominated myself and then Jen also.
Why don't, why can't, why can't, um, who's, who's nominated?
Mackenzie.
Sounds like Jen and I. We're nominating ourselves.
Okay. All right.
Is that good with you?
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. But we need seconds.
Second.
I'll make it a second, yeah.
Yes?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then Regionalization Committee.
Jen?
I've already done that for two years. I'm sorry. That was a very long two years.
Caitlin?
Caitlin is not excited about the idea.
Mackenzie?
I did it for years and years.
Do it again.
No. Dave? Dave or Eric, you're up.
Sounds like that spot's gonna be open.
We need, we need, we need one and then a.
Does it have to be someone from the school committee?
We need one and then an alternate. So we really do actually need kind of two.
Does it have to be someone from the school committee?
I guess that would be.
What if we had, well, could we have a Gil Montague representative? Or no, it has to be a school committee member?
Yeah, it has to be a school committee.
But then we're not a voting member, so I just don't understand.
That's the problem.
There really needs to be something like really looked into, but I have not had that capacity.
So how about we table this one, get a little more clarification as to whether we, who needs to serve? And we will come back and do this one next time. All right? Okay. So then all the other seats are filled. Right? Yep, that's it. Okay. So now we'll enter into a public hearing. Does anybody have anything that they wanna? Did, are we still doing the sign up or?
Uh, yeah, we didn't have, I don't think we have the sign up over there. Yeah.
All right. So you're either gonna have to speak really loudly or come up to the mic, whichever you're more comfortable with. Okay.
And don't, don't be nervous. We're all friends.
Say it if you want.
So I will just say before I start that, um, I did get a very prompt response from Lisa. Unfortunately, she's not here, but, so I did appreciate that. Um, so I wrote an email with my concerns from the last few weeks in the meetings and, and things that I just feel like I gathered. So I'll start. Um, hello, Lisa, and to whom else this may concern. I'm writing to as a former EES student, longtime resident, and now parent of students at EES. I have done my best to show up to school committee meetings and what I have witnessed over the past year has been upsetting. I have witnessed our administration deflect when asked tough questions and speak poorly of staff. Most recently, there was a comment made in regards to the preschool teachers and insinuating that they have a glorified two-hour break every day while the students nap. As a parent of a current pre-K student and having another have gone through the program, I can tell you that those teachers are extremely busy tending to children during that time. Lisa, perhaps you should take the time to visit these classrooms to see the reality of the situation. I have heard from at least a handful of parents, if not more, who have expressed that they have fought for multiple years since you, Lisa, have been hired to receive IEP services that their children are entitled to by law, only to be defeated and left feeling like they have no choice but to leave our district. They turn around and have their needs met within weeks of attending another school. Why is this happening? Parents choosing to take their kids out of Irving Elementary School wasn't heard of. We could chalk this up to hearsay, but I have learned that if it walks like a duck, talks like a duck, it's a duck. Lisa, you mentioned being fiscally responsible at a meeting back on May 3rd in regards to cutting the preschool program down to one classroom due to low enrollment. Yet there was mention of two sixth grade classes containing seven kids in each class. You cited the decision was based on the needs of those students. However, on multiple occasions, I have heard how high the needs are of our current first grade class. The classroom has twenty-plus kids, from my understanding. These children are an epitome of the lasting effects of COVID. I have took, take, I took the time to re-watch a previous school committee meeting on November 15th. There you said everyone, staff and students, are struggling from the effects of COVID and that the adjustment counselor's plate is full. You specifically referenced that there were five parent referrals in first grade and only one in sixth grade. To me, it would have been fiscally responsible to have divided the first grade classroom into two to help better support their needs. I have been informed that you have upwards of five staff members at any time in first grade to help assist with their high needs. With the loss of funding and less staff, I don't see this improving. It will only get worse. The school adjustment counselor that you provided via grant that you and Jennifer keep mentioning will be gone September of 2024. You keep saying the effects of COVID could last three to five years. So what happens when she's gone and there's no money to further support the needs that our students have? After last week's meeting from May 3rd, I'm feeling frustrated and defeated. I was alongside many parents, staff and community members fighting on your behalf for more for funding for the school. We sat and listened to the lack of transparency and support on an administrative level. I understand that you were given lemons and made lemonade with what you could. However, it is not lost on you that the staff is struggling and the students are struggling and you couldn't express that. I understand that you are trying to assure parents that everything will be okay with the cards that you are dealt. Mr. Bemory asked you to name a dollar amount that you felt would cover the needs at Irving Elementary School and you said none were needed. You have lost my trust and I'm not sure, I'm, I'm sure I'm not alone. If you are truly supportive of your staffs and students and families, I would have appreciated hearing the struggles that the school has been experiencing from your perspective. There is a clear divide in the staff at Irving and a disregard of feelings and experiences that have been expressed by both staff and Irving families. I feel a lack of confidence and leadership of the school moving forward and I encourage you to put your personal feelings inside and genuinely look at what is in the best interest of the students at Irving Elementary. At the end of the day, the children who will suffer, the children are who will suffer most. And obtaining these funds and having extra staff can only improve the current situation. It saddens me that Irving is turning into what it is and to hear that Irving Elementary School is being stuck in the same category as other schools is frustrating. We have never been like other schools. This school is what people come to our town for. The students who attend Irving are the future of our community and consider their education to be investment in our town. We have the opportunity to do better, but it can only be done if it is supportive collectively. Changes need to be made. I am open to a meeting in person if you feel you wish to discuss this further. I just want to also add, also reflecting on the last couple of weeks, it has been not lost on me and I'm sure many others, how I feel there's been a little bit of a lack of support even on a school committee level, whether it's lack of presence, lack of speaking up, and things that have been said are not in favor of what we collectively had tried to accomplish here. So I know some of you wear multiple hats in this community, but you are elected into these positions and remember that we picked you because we feel you are in the best, serving the best interest of our school and our children.
Thank you. Kid vote for you though. Can you just state for the?
Oh, I'm Jessica Navala.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
A simple request. Mrs. Ososki and I continue to maintain the Pollinator Garden. We're very proud of it. Please bring back the porta potty. It's gone. There are so many families here on the weekend. I don't know what happened to it, but it's not there. We could use it. The families could use it.
Was that us or the record?
That was part of the budget.
For the budget. Okay. That's all. Okay. Okay. So if that was something that was cut in the budget, then.
It's been on for a while, I think.
Okay. All right. So that's, we'll look into that then. Go ahead.
I just have a question for, are you willing to, you said that Lisa responded to you now? I have a meeting with her on Friday. Oh, okay. Yeah, I just was wondering what the response was. Yeah, yeah. No, she was pretty prompt and willing to meet with me and we did set up a time.
Anybody else? All right. So we're gonna move on to approving the minutes from March 23rd and April 4th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from March 21st, 2023 and April 4th, 2023.
I'll second. I just wanna, for purposes of discussion, we have April 4th written, not on our agenda, but April 5th written in the minutes. So.
I believe it was the 5th.
The 5th, yeah. Okay.
I'll amend my motion to the April 5th.
Oh, okay. Did you say the 4th?
I said the 4th, yeah.
Okay.
I should remember it was my birthday.
No, I was gonna say, yeah.
And no one didn't, I forgot to bring me my cake.
All right. So there's a, an amendment. Did you second the amendment?
Yep. Yep. Seconded the amendment.
All right. Any discussion about the minutes?
None appeared?
Nope. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on. Warren's. Are you, where? Brittany's here. I'll set with those. Okay. And then, um, gifts. Do we have any gifts that we need to vote on? How about grants?
No.
Okay. All right. Moving on. A report of the Gil Montague representative? There you are.
I was disappointed. So I had yet to go to a meeting, but I had reached out to get Gil Montague to send me the meeting and then I'll report at least once a month. I agree with any twice.
Okay. And then while you're here, um, I'd like to add a report from the tech school. Since we hear from the Gil Montague, I'd like to hear, and you're the representative from the tech school. Okay. So I'd like to have that added to our agendas so that we can get a report from there as well.
If I can't make a meeting, I'll, I'll send in a written report.
Sure.
So, um, at the town meeting, I gave the enrollment. I think it was twenty-seven, they expect, or twenty-eight, they expect at least twenty-six. Um, I missed the last meeting because it was town meeting. Um, but they did have, uh, someone did, I did see from the minutes that someone gave their capstone, um, presentation. It was a three percent, oh, uh, increase overall for the town, um, and for all the towns. And, uh, probably the biggest thing is that we're looking for a new building. So we're gonna be exploring, they're gonna be doing a survey, um, with a study, I'm sorry, feasibility study from the MBSA. Um, yeah.
MSA.
Yes, thank you. Um, and, uh, that's probably gonna run close to a million dollars, but we have socked away enough money to be able to do that and not pass it on to the towns for the cost. Then that study, that feasibility study will determine how big the school needs to be and, uh, we're in the pipeline after that. Does anybody have any questions about the tech school?
How old is that building?
That building is forty years old. It was opened up in nineteen seventy-six. They are bursting at the seams. They took the auditorium and turned it into four classrooms. So.
All right.
And a lot of, well, a lot of the infrastructure is simply just, it's old.
Old.
Old. And the cost of replacing it with something new, it just, it doesn't make sense. A new, a newer building makes sense. So the thought is, and this is in the very early stages, is they will build the school over in the ball field area. Kids will continue to go to, um, school and then, once the building is completed and they're moved over that, they'll demolish the old school and turn that into playing fields.
The baseball or the football?
Uh, the baseball. They, uh, yeah, the baseball. And, uh, the aviation pro, uh, the new aviation program is right on track and they expect to enroll their first students in a year or so.
Great.
It's exciting.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thanks. Oh, that's me. Collaborative for Educational Services. So, um, we had a meeting. Dinner was served. Um, uh, before the meeting, there was an opportunity to tour the two buildings, the, um, Hampshire Educational Collaborative Heck and, or Academy and, um, and then the Collaborative for Educational Services building, both of which are undergoing some renovation. Um, the, uh, the first building is, uh, much older and so they're doing quite a bit more renovation on it um, to fit the needs of the students that attend there. I think they said they had about thirty students that attended and it just, uh, the building is kind of a strange layout. So they're looking to do some things to kind of make it more, uh, user friendly for the children. And then the, um, collaborative building in, in North Hampton is also just being updated because it's over twenty-five years old, I believe they said. Which it's, it's shocking to me that it's that old. Um, and so they're just doing things like updating the carpets and paint and kind of less, less intense updating. Um, and, uh, they talked about the cost for all of those things. Um, let me see if I can find my. It was actually somewhat of a short meeting. Um, I'm not gonna spend the time to look for it. Um, there wasn't, uh, they went over their enrollment and their budgets. Everything seems to be on track. Um, we, uh, they talked about some recent, um, events that they held. They were well-attended and, um, uh, there was a couple of people actually on the board that, that attended the workshops. And they said that they were, they were, um, they were well put on, well-run and, um, very, you know, useful information. So that's, it's good to hear. They gave a, um, a, uh, kind of a printout of all of the different, um, programs that were offered by the collaborative and then how many were being utilized. Um, I think that we could always look to see if there are things that we could utilize a little bit more since we're a member, a paying member. Um, see if there's things there that could fit our needs. And they were very clear to say that if we had a need that we weren't seeing be met by them, to please reach out to them, that they were interested in potentially, you know, trying to figure out how to meet those needs. So if we had something that, um, that we needed help with, that we couldn't find a program for, or, um, you know, something new that's come up, uh, they were very interested in working with us to, um, to build that program or to meet that need. So that was good to hear. Um, so, yeah, it was a nice, again, it was kind of a quick meeting. Um, there wasn't a lot of, you know, uh, or shattering information, if you wanna say. Um, and then, um, so the next meeting, I will let you know when it is and we'll go from there.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So next, regionalization update?
Yes. So, um, they tend to meet every time we meet or even when we randomly schedule a meeting, that's, they end up having one. So their last meeting was May 3rd. Um, they are putting out a request for a public school regionalization planning consultant. Um, and this project was made available by a grant funded through the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. So they're working on getting consultant in there to kind of gather all the information and the data. Um, they also have been going to different schools and presenting the information. Um, they've been sharing letters with faculty and staff to get feedback. They've been doing open forums for parents um, at different locations within those schools. They think like Turner-Spalz High School, Gil Elementary School, Pioneer High School, and then maybe Sheffield. Um, so those are happening all through the month of May, starting May 17th, which is tomorrow. Um, and I still think from some of these meetings, there's just a lot of questions that we have as Irving that I have not been able to get ahold of someone. Um, so I would love to find out how we are able to support this position, need, um, and then how we can continue to have that robust conversation, but also whoever is in that role to support them to make sure we're finding those best connections, whether it's through the town, through, um, the superintendent's office, like, you know, all those avenues. Cause I'm feeling like in this, there's just a lot of missing information. And even when we've asked for certain information, we're not getting that answer that I think is correct per se. Um, so being able to go, okay, who's next, what's next, and where do we wanna go with this and how this will impact us. So, um, with all being said, those are the different things. So with all being said, those are the different things that they are working on and meeting and collaborating with, and then trying to find that new person for a position to help support. And that is through Gil Montague. The grant was given to Gil Montague, so they are the ones that are putting this out-for-bid, receiving quotes.
So the whole cost was covered by the grant?
I believe so. I know it was a good amount of money. I was trying to find out the exact total, but I can't. But it's for fifty hours of work, so.
Okay. Capital plan, capital planning committee update?
Is that you? What's up? Lisa and I haven't met, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Superintendent report.
Yes. As you know, we are working with the Collins Center around operational efficiencies. For Unit Twenty-Eight, we have completed all the interviews with the representatives from the Collins Center. We have submitted the requested documents. There was a final second interview with the superintendent's office to wrap up this phase, and next, the Collins Center will be analyzing all data and preparing a report. Our next phase of learning walks just ended. We began on May ninth, and we wrapped up today at Irving. The first group of learning walks gave us good information regarding literacy and engagement at each school. We shared feedback on the school level with the staff at each school. On May tenth, the leadership team met to look at the feedback on a district level and to prepare feedback to share out union-wide. And after Phase Two, we will do this whole process again of sharing out on the school level and then on the union level. On May first, I attended a briefing presented by the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation on the FY twenty-four House budget. Briefly, they shared that tax revenue growth across the Commonwealth has been flat. Eight months into the fiscal year, Governor Haley signed three hundred and eighty-eight point seven million dollar supplemental budget into law. Additionally, she signed into law a one point one billion supplemental budget to include sixty-five million funding for universal school meals. The House budget funds based Chapter Seventy-eight for public schools at six point five eight billion, which was essentially leveled with the governor's budget, however, was a ten percent increase over this current fiscal year, and would increase minimum aid from thirty to sixty dollars per pupil. The House budget funded Special Education Circuit Breaker at five hundred and six point one million dollars, which is two point two five million more than the governor. And fiscal twenty-four will be the first chance for policymakers to act on the representation of the Rural School District Commission, including increasing funds for rural aid. On Tuesday, May second, I attended a school budget press conference in Leverett with Principal Annie Foley-Fruis, Representative Glaze, Senator Humphord, and other town officials. On May eighth, I was invited along with other Western Mass superintendents and legislators to a breakfast in Town Hall at Union Station in North Hampton, where we met with Dr. Patrick Tutwiler, who's the Secretary of Education. He shared his plans and visions, and superintendent shared with him perspective on the issues that impact our districts in Franklin and Hampshire counties. Also, Monday, on May eleventh, Dr., Corina Whistlow met with the CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. That was a virtual meeting at seven. And on May seventeenth, we are having our second Union Twenty-Eight Students Support Coffee and Conversations at Schutzeberry Elementary at five P M. in person. And that's my report.
What was the date of that again? Coffee thing?
Tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow.
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Going forward, Jen, could you send that to us as part of our packet, your report?
I usually just do notes, but I certainly can do a brief synopsis to send.
Thanks. All right, so the Director of Finance and Operations?
Sure. We're halfway through the annual town meeting calendar. Leverett Heather's town meeting on April twenty-ninth passed the budget. Irving passed the amended budget last Wednesday. Although the total town coverage budget is final, the school committee will be voting on the allocation of that funding later this evening. Schutzeberry has the next town meeting on Saturday, June third, and finally, New Salem and Wendell's meetings will be held simultaneously on Tuesday, June sixth. I'm meeting monthly with the food service directors individually and as a collective group. We have been aligning processes and getting ready to close up the year. My favorite part of the meetings are when the directors share successes and ideas and challenges with each other. It's great when they discuss delivery challenges with certain vendors or brands they found, quality of produce, the C P process, how they're keeping track of meal counts. Don Leclair, our food service director, has the most experience of the group, and she's been a great support for the other food service directors during these meetings. Irving's registration at SAM.gov system has been renewed this year. Our new expiration date is May first, two thousand twenty-four. One of the things enrollment at SAM.gov allows us to access is a small rural school achievement grants from the U.S. Department of Education's Rural Education Achievement Program. Irving was awarded fifteen thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars, most recently through this grant. Finally, the bargaining agreement with Union Eight teachers has been signed, which means we're finally able to retroactively pay the teachers who have been receiving salaries on the FY twenty-two schedule all year, and so they've been retroactively paid the FY twenty-three amount. This has allowed me to review the FY twenty-three budget and get an idea of how we'll have the year. We have had many unanticipated expenses, and appears the requested amount of three hundred and eighty thousand five hundred dollars initial funding requested from the town back in January might be close to the necessary gap to close the deficit.
Was there more, or is that it?
Is it?
Okay, before we start asking questions.
Sure.
So it was a little unclear from the communication. So you're feeling like the, 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 the overage that we're going to have at the end of this year is three hundred and eight thousand?
I think it was three hundred and two thousand. It's close to what we have in those unanticipated expenses for special education.
Not an overage of deficit, right?
Sorry, yeah, so, so, right, so they overspend, so I'm sorry, that's what I meant, that's what I meant, yeah, yeah. And, yeah, thanks for clarifying, that's a big difference. And, and so, is that including the hundred and fifty thousand that the town had allocated out of free cash to support the school?
Yeah, so that's three hundred and two thousand, that's a projection, includes a hundred and fifty thousand that's already been allocated, so it's just the, the gap between a hundred and fifty and the three oh two that we would.
So we spent beyond the three hundred and eight thousand dollars that the town had appropriate, appropriated?
They didn't appropriate that, they appropriated a hundred and fifty thousand, but it looks like we will need almost the full amount we requested.
And so can you speak to some of these unexpected expenses? Are these solely the, what we all know and have talked about ad nauseam, these unexpected expense costs, or are there other unexpected costs?
There are other, there are other costs that we've had, but we, it looks like we wouldn't be within budget if we exclude the tuition transportation costs.
So, so can you speak to some of those unexpected costs? What were that?
So we had to fix the tractor, and then we had to hire plowing for some time when the tractor was down. We had some capital project expenses that were, that hit our budget that were unanticipated. We had, we went over on fuel, we went over on electricity, just regular utility costs.
So the four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, that has nothing to do, it says not out-of-district expenditures, so the four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars has nothing to do with the out-of-district placement?
That does not have to do with that out-of-district placement. That is, looking at last year from the expenditure report from May ninth to the end of the year, and we know that we receive invoices delayed from lenders or purchasing, or purchasing, so when we look at that timeframe of where we were to how we ended the year, that is a protection of, if we were to spend about the same amount, but I did go line by line and remove things that we don't anticipate having to spend. For instance, we only have to do an end-of-year report audit every three years, so we did spend that last year, we don't have to spend that this year. So I removed those pieces from the amount spent, from, or the amount not spent, but the amount from May ninth to June thirtieth from the amount that they total.
So you don't track purchases? So like, I guess, in my aspect of the budget, you have things that you've spent, you keep track of all of that, you don't base it on what you spent last year? You would just, you would base it on what you need, and what you spend, and what the invoice is. So if you send out an invoice, you would know that you've made that purchase? I guess that's where I'm really confused.
We're gonna send out invoices.
You, you, you know what you spent because you ordered that thing, right? Even if the invoice doesn't come in for another six months, you know what it was when you, when you purchased it, when you ordered it. Why, why is that not being accounted for then? Whether the invoice comes in tomorrow or six months from now, you know you spent that money.
So not always, so when we have contractor services, we, those, we get an invoice for it kind of based on what they needed in their, their hours, whether it's a plumber or electrician or some community doing evaluations for students. Those are, we can get a projection of what the expenses will be, what invoices we'll receive, but we cannot track every single invoice we will receive between now for the rest of this whole year.
So currently, we have two hundred and ninety-nine. Two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars left in the budget, correct? With everything that has been incurred? That's what you gave us for five thirty-one in our expenditure report. So two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
Spent your report for this meeting, or the one they sent?
The one you sent for, to date, to five thirty-one.
The one attached to the email or the one in the meeting materials?
The meeting materials.
Is it different than the one that was in the email?
Well, the one in the email is just, they're different, whatever day you pull the expenditure report is a glimpse of what it is on that day. So to, in order to post meeting materials in advance, which we have to do, the expenditure reports are, it's a snapshot of where we were then. The ones I sent were the snapshot of where it was on May ninth. So the dates may be different, and things might even be a little different as.
I just don't know how we're gonna spend that much money if we're gonna be in a deficit of three hundred thousand dollars to let these, that we're gonna, we're gonna spend five hundred thousand dollars?
So it's not about, we're not making purchases for, you know, for office supplies and those, those types of things. These are bills that come in, so we might receive the electric bill a month later. We are gonna receive probably another fuel bill. There are bills that we receive after that date. It's not that we're now going out and spending four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. They're, a lot of them are monthly and utility and things that will break and things we're gonna need to fix before June thirtieth.
So they're things that should be paid within a month. They shouldn't have, be dragged out until February the following year, because that's what's happened in the past. I was looking at our, our encumbrances, and to me, an encumbrance is, you know that you have, you've purchased something, you got a bill, but you're not going to be able to pay it within that fiscal year, so it should be paid within a month or two, at the most.
I can't, I can't speak to that much, or with the February.
Well, I'm just saying, that is the idea of an encumbrance, correct?
Well, the encumbrances we use majoritely for payroll, that we know that that is, we're going to need to spend an amount on, on the teachers and the other stuff, and so we cover that money, and you don't typically do it for things like plumbing, work that has to be done.
So why is, why are so many bills paid after the fiscal year has ended? That's what, I guess, my question is.
Because we receive a lot of them after or towards the end. It's, this year, I've asked that any, if, if, I've asked my office that if they know they're going to make purchases, not unanticipated expenses, but if they know they're going to make purchases, they make those purchases before June first, so that we can shut off that spending, and we'll have a better idea earlier in the summer of what the setting is.
So are you proposing that we go to the town and ask for three hundred thousand dollars?
I'm not proposing anything that's a discussion.
But that's where you're saying we're at?
I think that we are, we need more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of salary.
I thought, hang on, I thought you just said that the three hundred and eight was before the hundred and fifty thousand, that the town had already, so the difference is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Am I understanding that?
Yes. We asked for a hundred and eight thou, a hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars. We were told that a hundred, they were gonna do a hundred and fifty, so we did tie up the town's free cash, and now it's, no, we, we're gonna owe, it looks like we're going to still owe upwards of three hundred thousand dollars.
So basically, we're over budget three hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
If I ran my business like that, where would I be?
And.
Are you kidding me? I am not happy.
Where was, so you said it's electric, it's, it's, it's?
It's not, we could have covered all of those expenses within our budget. It is purely the amount that we've been talking to the town since December in of the tuition and transportation. That would be over in September.
But you said it wasn't, it had nothing to do with that. You said the seventy-seven thousand dollars was out-of-district placement, but you said that the four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars had nothing to do with the transportation and out-of-district placement? You just stated that.
No, I, I think I misunderstood you. The four hundred and fifty-five thousand is expenses we would have from now to the end of the year, aside from the tuition and transportation.
Scott had a question, but if you wanted to. Okay. Go ahead, Scott, and then I'll jump in.
Okay. Just to make sure, I'm really thinking of coming back and forth, I just want to be very clear that because the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I can't find it in any of the expenditure reports. So that, the, the expenditure report, oh, sorry. Because the expenditure report doesn't have the hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there, that two twenty-nine that we're seeing as the available balance should actually reflect three hundred and seventy-nine, correct?
Sure.
So when you say that, you know, you're expecting to spend four fifty-five inclusive of everything, leaving a shortfall of three hundred and three thousand, approximately, that's prior to applying the hundred and fifty thousand. So your, your actual amount that you're saying, if your projections are correct, come June thirtieth, you're projecting a shortfall of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that we're, because it keeps going back and forth, it's very confusing about what numbers we're talking about. My other comment is, you know, while I appreciate that you went through and pulled out things like textbooks that were spent in FY twenty-two, and, you know, and a lot of those in the last two weeks, I mean, we're talking, just on your spreadsheet alone, it was fifteen thousand dollars worth of textbooks and materials alone, and supplies alone in the last two weeks of June last year. To turn around and say that, even taking those out, that we anticipate that because we spent four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars last year, we're gonna anticipate that we'll spend four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars this year. I would agree with Mackenzie, and Jen said the same thing. Maybe it's a little premature to come up with those numbers, but we should know exactly what's being encumbered for anything payable. Every single service or purchase to date that has been done, you know that an invoice is coming. That invoice may not come until July. We understand that, that's what the encumbrance is for, but not for, we're not really sure, so we want to encumber an additional hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars because that's how much we spent last year. That, I can't, I can't in good conscience put that on a warrant and say, we need to allocate out of stabilization another hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars because we're not sure how much we're gonna get, and we're not sure what the bills are gonna be. I know in my last place of appointment, all spending that was not necessary to function stops on June first. And that's it. If you don't spend, unless it's an urgent need that has to be addressed between June first and June thirtieth, you don't spend it to minimize the amount of encumbrances. So maybe on May sixteenth, we're a little early to try and assume that we need a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. I really think this will be one of those first week in June, we need the fourteen days in order to get it on a warrant, whatever that dollar amount is, but I think it's a little premature to say that we should just draft a warrant and draft a request that says another hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. By adding that in, you, you're, it's saying that systemically, we're not within our budget, and that's, that's alarming to me, that we couldn't stay within that, when all we heard previous was that. when all we heard previous was that we're gonna be over because of the out of district and the related transportation. That's why we needed the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And now it's above and beyond that. And a couple of meetings ago, we heard we're on a spending freeze. We're on a spending freeze. We're gonna hold it because we, we wanna come in at or below the, the budget that is currently allocated. And to hear that just within six weeks later, we couldn't meet that mark and not only that, we've exceeded that by a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, is a little disheartening to, to see that we couldn't even, we couldn't come a penny under what the projections would be. I mean, you're, you're asking for the exact amount that would have been allocated at annual town meeting plus the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, when historically, every single year, this money turned back. Every single year. And to say that this is the year that our unanticipated overages are going to eat up all of that and there will be no extra, I find that hard to believe. And I have a feeling we'll be back here next year looking at, well, we encumbered a hundred and fifty-three thousand, but we only spent a hundred and four of that, right? Because that's what happens each and every year. We look at the encumbrances going back five years. We encumbered it from one fiscal year into the next. We look at how much of that encumbrance we actually spent and it's never all of it, which means it's a shot in the dark of what we're encumbering and it's not based on actual services rendered or our services anticipated. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about those numbers. I think, you know, I, I heard from our previous interim superintendent, Rob Moller, who said, you know, when somebody asks him, how'd you get those projections? He said, I made them up. That's what everybody does. Projections are very difficult. I understand that. And that's why we say, I don't want to base it on projections. I'd like you to base it on exact invoices that you have already received and have yet to be paid or services that you absolutely know between superintendent, you, the special education director, the principal. You one hundred percent should know every single service that's coming in between now and the end of the school year. There will be some minute things that happen. Those will be urgent needs and you're talking a percent point, maybe. It should not be a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of unknowns. So I just, I think you can look a little closer to that.
I agree. And I do also, I'm sorry, hold on a second, Eric. I also will echo the, the statement that Scott made, which was we were told that we were in a higher, uh, spending freeze, like a budget freeze. So I'm interested to know what was spent since, I believe that was February that, when I say that we were told we were, that there was a freeze. So what has been spent that isn't obviously fuel and electricity? And I'm not talking salaries either because those were encumbered. What has been spent that is so, that, that is so costly? And if we, if we're in this freeze, what are these invoices coming in? Because we've been in a freeze for several months.
So we can freeze spending for, for some things, but in order to have the, the schools to function, we still need basic things. We need to have supplies, that we need to have paper, and we need to be able to have a parking lot cleared. And there are many, so we can freeze things that are our wants but not needs, but we still have to fund things that are needs.
Right. And I did say, obviously, the electricity and the heat or slash air conditioning. I, I don't, I, I will push back on the paper. My, my district is in a freeze and, no, I went out and bought my own paper today. So I'll push back on that. But I would like to know, so I'm asking you to send us a clear list of what has been spent from February to today and then what is anticipated, because as you said, the invoices may not have come in. So I want that to include anything, even if the invoices have not come in yet, but you've already spent it because you already ordered it. What is that? How much does that come to? I'm interested to hear what, or see what that number is. And then as far as your electricity and your water bill or whatever those, those have been every month. And the rate that we're paying right now is the rate that we've been paying. So you should have a pretty good guesstimate as to what is gonna be month over month because there's not a lot of change there, right? The, the, the school is open a generally the same amount of days. The weather has been generally the same. We're not talking about sub-zero weather. We're not talking about ninety-degree weather where the air conditioner's been going, you know, twenty-four seven. So you should be able to look at the projected month over month of electricity and heat or air conditioning and have a good idea of what those will be for the next month and a half. So they shouldn't be like unknown numbers. You should be able to look at generally what, what they are. So again, I'm, I'm still confused why that's kind of a unknown number. You should, you should be able to, to look at either what's been the last couple of months or even what it was last year. Generally around May, we spend this on electricity. Knowing the rate that we are in. And we spend this much on whatever, air conditioning and water and whatever the other utilities are that we spend. Again, I'm not sure, you know, I'd like to see, see a little bit more carefully where these numbers are coming from.
The projection was based on the numbers from last year.
Oh.
Has, has the electric rates gone up that much?
They actually have gone down recently. They've gone down recently, I believe.
Erica, what, what were you gonna say?
I forgot.
Okay. If it comes back to you, let me know.
I also heard there was something about the exit signs needing new bulbs, the fire extinguishers needing new stuff. Like, I think that's kind of the stuff that we're looking for to hear just from you as like, that, that was unexpected, right? So there was a, some kind of inspection. We did not pass it.
Thank you for, for bringing it up. We should did send me an email with some of those expenses. And one of them was we failed some fire inspections for the exit signs, um, fire extinguishers. And I can look into.
You know, we had the exit light bulb replacement, which caused us to fail our fire inspection. Replacement of outdated fire extinguishers, which caused us to play, fail our fire inspection. We had the tractor repair, an electric bill for the new tilt skillet, an invoice regarding splitting file with the senior center, LED emergency lights, the storage pod for our capital planning project. So I think Caitlin has some of that and can put a list together and get that out.
Scott, you had your hand up. Do you?
You know, it's just a follow-up point that instead of a bulked number, embedding that number line by line into the expenditure report is very helpful to know where it can apply. I know that was done with salaries, you know, the salaries were encumbered. But if we're expecting these costs and they're known costs, they should be encumbered on there and not just on a memo that says we're expecting to spend four hundred and fifty-five. If we know the line items of, of items that we're expecting, encumber them. Because I know as a committee member, you look at those encumbrances and you say, why are we encumbering three thousand dollars on this various line item? Well, we're expecting this survey to begin in mid-June and it typically costs this much. And there's your driver sheet for how you came up with that number. And I'll, I'll echo what other members of the community have said in the past, and Marty said this. The town will support the funds, but it needs to be clearly articulated what it's for. To just say that this is how much we spent last year and we want that funds again so that we can remain under budget, there's no clear articulation about how it's being spent. So if we can do the diligent, due diligence of embedding that in there and then creating a driver sheet, which I know people used to say, this is where we're falling short and this is why. So that we can articulate that and that goes into the minority information too. We have to have a special time meeting to raise and appropriate additional funds. So that's my ask, is that it gets embedded into the driver sheet or expenditure report, sorry.
Go ahead, Jacob.
I would recommend that perhaps you look at some of your projects, capital projects that are completed to see if you have any funds left over and use those before you go and ask us again for more money. Because if comes out stabilization, it requires two-thirds of a vote, not a simple majority. And the vote was close at town meeting. So I would like, before I give you my vote, I wanna know that you look through all your notes and crannies and all your small little amounts before you come and ask me for more money. Because to me, it seems like you're not keeping track of your expenses. If you're that much over and it's not related to your special education out of district costs, you guys are not doing a good job of budgeting your money. This is not, you're not an open book here to take what you need all the time. We're not at that time. It is entirely related to special education. You just told us not less than five minutes ago, it was not. So I'm really confused on if it is or it's not. So as a taxpayer, I wanna know what we're overspending on. I want better accountability. I don't get that. I've been to about five or six of your school committee meetings. There's no accountability. I, as a taxpayer, can't pick up a sheet and know what you've spent because it's one thing this week, the next meeting's a different thing. It's not consistent. I was on the school committee for a number of years. We had that built in. I know your software can do it. It just might take a little time to tease it out. But, you know, your tilt thing was a capital project. If you overspent that, then I wanna know what you overspent from. Are you allocating it to the right line item? Your choice for your storage because you didn't want to do a project mid-year? Well, perhaps that shouldn't have happened if you didn't have the funding. If you can't keep coming back to town asking for more money, we are at that point that you may not get it. So I suggest you look through all your capital and all your little line items that are hanging out there that we all have sometimes and scrape those first before you come back.
Carrie, speak to it. We don't have capital projects.
Excuse me? Yes, you do. Your rugger capital project, your tilt was a capital project. Your something else going in the kitchen that's a capital project. It's special funding that's designed for that and it's, that's what it is. I suggest that you educate yourself a little bit about it. You have capital projects. That's you get special funding. Yes?
I know, but does someone else wanna speak to this? You don't hold capital projects.
You, you.
I can a little bit. I'm the chair of the income, I am a member of the capital planning board. Capital planning does work a little bit differently. It's, however, the school does have several capital planning projects. As of a town Irving, Irving Alldiapan expenditure, expenditure report from July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, there is seven outstanding capital projects. There is the Irving Elementary School track for fourteen thousand dollars. Irving Elementary School classroom furniture, thirty-eight thousand and change. Event chair replacements, twelve thousand. Irving Elementary School carpet replacement, twenty-one thousand and change. Window shade replacement, thirty thousand dollars. Walk-in freezer fridge, sixty-seven thousand. That one I'm a little confused on because I thought that project was completely completed. Okay. And a phone system upgrade for five thousand dollars. So that is money that, while not directly worked into the Irving Elementary School budget because they are special articles, they can actually be, if the projects are done or closed out, through town meeting vote, that funding can be moved from these line items into other line items. I also do have a question. The tractor repair, I'm confused as to why that's not coming out of your equipment maintenance line, which looks to have about twelve thousand dollars in it. And it's my understanding that the tilt skillet project, when you were notified that it was going over budget, that you were told the funding had to come from your own budget, that there, there was no other additional funding for it. So I would question why you're now coming back and asking for that funding? Because I, it's my understanding you were told that there, it was a capital project and there was no other funding available for it.
So I would say the extra expenses we have this year have got us up to the point that our budget could still handle it. It is exclusively the tuition and transportation that has put us over. So we had, we, when we asked for three hundred and eight thousand, five hundred dollars and we were told, you know, instead of tying up with the cash, we could use a hundred and fifty thousand. The hope was we would have room left in our budget for the year. But with the extra fees we were anticipating, we don't. And because we cut a lot of things out of the budget last year, we only had a zero point five percent increase. So we removed things that we felt like were over budgeted. So we wouldn't have this massive now and then. It put our budget very close this year and then we have those extra expenses in the special education tuition and transportation.
So even with knowing that you had those extra special education expenses, why were projects that were, like the tilt, for example, why was that moved forward if you knew that you guys were already, in theory, starting the school year off over budget? I mean, one of your unanticipated expenses is an increase in the cap's collaborative hourly, hourly rate. Was that not something that was done at the beginning of the school year? That rate was increasing?
It was not. And the special education expenses weren't moving there?
And I, my next question would be, why not? Last week at town meeting, when the chair of the select board effectively wiped out your hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was set aside, did no one from administration, sorry, school committee, but school committee or the budget office get up and say, hey, wait a minute, we're gonna need that money?
I don't know. I guess I, I thought that money, the original, the special town meeting was our, the original four hundred and fifty thousand or?
There was a hundred and fifty thousand and then that was originally voted on again. And then we agreed that we would put aside another hundred and fifty thousand that would be voted on as special. And so there was still kind of this pocket of a hundred and fifty kind of floating that was going to come from free cash. And with the motions that were made to get you guys your FY24 school budget, that a hundred, extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars was wiped out. So there is no extra flow for the school. That money was, and so I am questioning, looking at these reports, they're dated April 9th, why no one from administration or anybody said, hey, wait a minute, we've run these reports and we think we're gonna need that money. Please don't take it away.
I would say we were waiting on how the retroacupay was going to affect the school budget.
But wasn't that built in? That was, we had already had that built in.
It was right about the same time.
But it was already built in, so we, we shouldn't have, had have been worried about going over at all.
Yes, I can, we had it built into those specific lines, but how it would affect the, the balance of the whole is a little unknown.
Jacob has a question.
Go ahead. You, you go and then I go.
So I guess I'm gonna, because this expenditure report was given to us and it was generated the day of town meeting, annual town meeting at 1:00 PM. And this was the expenditure report based on the original FY23 budget provided by, I assume, the school, the business office. And it shows that we had two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, some odd, that had not been encumbered, had not been spent, plus the hundred and fifty thousand that we had just allocated at special town meeting. So you had at that point, three hundred and eighty plus thousand dollars remaining and some of those special, eh, costs have already been spent. And we're talking about five weeks left in the fiscal year. And I was asked, and I don't know if it was you Mackenzie or not, someone asked me, at least one, if not multiple people, to clarify when I made that motion to use up all of the free cash, including the remaining one fifty that we had earmarked. Was the school going to have enough to cover the additional costs without that extra one fifty? Based on having almost four hundred thousand dollars left for the year, that was, was why I confidently said, yes, based on expenditures so far, was plenty of money. And no one spoke up and said that we were three hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand. Your email, I believe, says four hundred and fifty-five thousand, not including the out of district. So I'm confused, like others, is it one fifty, three hundred or four fifty? Regardless, any of that was not even mentioned by anyone at any point. I'd by far would not have made that motion or have been confident or I would have retracted it on the floor and said, no, then we, that isn't the solution. So why is it six days later, when these reports are, you know, seven days old, that we're hearing that that's a huge deficit and not nearly balanced budget?
So I'd like an answer to that question that you just posed.
It was not brought up then?
Yeah. I mean, you were, you were at town meeting. You, you, you knew the information. How was that not brought up?
I had not run an analysis at that point.
I mean, we had this, I mean, I assumed that we were okay at town meeting. I saw the two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. I thought we were in the clear. I figured that should float us over to the end of the year. That is, I didn't raise any questions for that reason.
Thank you for saying that because I was.
I, I'm confused as, as, as a business manager of a school district and when you know that at town floor, we are gonna have lengthy conversations about a school budget, both for this year and for next year, why wasn't all the information, why wasn't this report run then? Why wasn't all the information available to make informed decisions? As Jacob just. As Jacob just said, had this been available, he would not have made the decisions that he made. We, as voters, may not have made the decisions that we made. I'm not understanding, as the business manager of this school district, why that wasn't an important thing for you to have prepared for that school meeting? You, you, you were at the school, at the, sorry, town meeting. You were at the town meeting.
Yes. I did not anticipate what would happen at the town meeting. I did not know the agreement then. I didn't know this was going to be a conversation.
Well, the warrant is on the town meeting. You knew we were talking about it. You knew we had this outstanding sped charge bill. I, I really have to question why that that wasn't done. If you're going to come into a situation, why you wouldn't be as prepared as possible to answer any questions anybody had about these budgets? I, I, I'm, I'm quite flabbergasted about that. I think that's part of the job, is to be prepared for questions.
I did not anticipate FY23 being part of the town meeting.
Then my second point is, so in your email, and, and I'm just going to put that aside for a moment. In your email, the unanticipated fiscal year 2023, other than tuition and transportation, comes out to be $37,814 of the things you've listed there. So you're saying that our budget was so tight that $37,814 extra expenses has now wiped out any extra we had in our budget?
Those were just some of the unanticipated expenses. I mean, there's.
Okay, so let me be clear. When we ask you for information, we want all of it. We don't want just some of it. Because once again, we don't have the whole picture if you are just telling us this is some of it. I'm thinking $37,814 is what put us over. So if there are more unanticipated expenses than that, then we need to know what they are so that we can make informed decisions going forward.
So we budget as closely as we can on, without trying to tie up too much of the town's free cash. So we don't, if we think that we're going to need $15,000 worth of instructional materials, we budget $15,000. We don't cushion those lines so that we have extra yet.
In a three-point, whatever million-dollar budget, $37,000 plus whatever, it's unknown because it's not listed here.
Those were just the large ones.
Sorry?
Those were like the large ones, ones that don't.
Okay. So, so, okay, so not knowing the rest of it, I can't really speak to the total. That is enough to put our budget over?
I think we would have been within budget. I believe that we would end up in budget. We just have that $300 plus thousand dollars.
So you're saying $40,000 is the cushion that we, is the, is the potential extra we have in a budget on a fiscal year to year?
Sure.
You want to talk to that, Jacob?
Sure. And can I say one other thing first?
Sure.
Since February, the finance committee of the select board has been discussing this with the first request for the $300,000 for the current year. And ever since, the discussion when we said, we'll do $150,000 now, and we really need the school to find it and, and, you know, let's be conservative for the next four or five months and make sure that you can cover the other $150,000 so that we don't need to allocate it. Because that's the last thing we want to do. So I have a big issue with hearing that on May 10th, we aren't prepared to know where we are in spending four months plus, three months plus after, when we're barely a month plus away from the end of the year, and we don't have any idea that we still have a deficit that's significant. In terms of year to year, I'll find the rate data here to play a bunch of things out, bear a thing on sight. The amount that has been turned back is usually in the hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. So if we're budgeting to $37,000, then I guess we forgot to spend it in prior years. Not to be smart, well, you got to be smart, I guess, but it, it seems unreal. And I know there's a difference between what I'm going to see as town spend on the school budget and what the total budget was because of grants and everything else. But you're talking about a half percent over FY22. FY22 is 3.217 after what you return. That's what the actual spend was from town. So if you look at that with a half a percent increase, it's 3.233. And with the extra money we've allocated, that means you had $240,000 this year above what we gave you last year plus a half percent. So that's 240 of the 370, 380 total special ed extra cost. And so I guess between the 37, I'm still not getting to another $150,000, let alone, you know, so, so I'm getting the exact year to year on sight. But go ahead.
Most of our budget is made up of staff salaries. So when we do have an increase, the majority of it is with COLA and step increases for the staff.
Understood. But when we talked about this in February, that was already encumbered.
Yep.
The budget for coming fiscal year already had some built in because negotiations were still underway. It already had an increase built in, right? And that got adjusted after, once that was completed. Those aren't things that were different since May 10th or February, right? I mean, we knew those May of last year, what they were for this year. Maybe not one item that was out of our control. It doesn't, it doesn't matter at all.
I'm going to go, Jacob, because then we'll go to you.
I forget. I just wanted to know. I don't remember what I was going to say.
Okay. If you come up with it, yeah, or, you know, kind of way, way big.
Caitlin, you mentioned staff increases. What increase were those? Because I know the school committee had stated that, first of all, can you help pull down the advertisements that she put up, which I believe is for a math, a para, and a long-term staff? So what other staff increases were there this year that were affect, that are affecting the budget?
Just the COLA and the step increases for them. And the, some of those positions work for next year and one of those were replacement of this year.
But that COLA and step increases would have been already worked in the budget when we saw it improved it?
The step increases and COLA was undetermined because we had, we didn't settle the agreement.
But there was money made to settle that agreement.
There was some.
And certainly by May 10th, we knew what the settlement was.
Yeah, briefly before that.
We stayed within, what was it, built in there? We were told that ahead of time, so we knew what to work with. So that was, actually more was built in than what?
The COLA, yes, but some of the lanes, no, some was long jump. There were, there was, there was some of that work that made it a little bit tricky to try to gauge where we were with the retro.
But certainly by town meeting, May 10th, we knew what we were, what the COLA was, what the retro was.
I have to look at it because right around the same time, the retro had just hit me. Although, just on the Karen, the retro act pay, I can't remember what it was.
Was there somebody over here? Okay, we'll go back to Scott then. I thought there was a hint.
It's just a question of process, and I asked a question only because it's one of the bullet points that you brought up, and it's fixing the tractor. Do you recall about how far back that was done? I'm just curious because of, you know, processing those payments. Do you recall if that was over the winter or if it was early in fall or recently?
It wasn't, I don't remember. I have to check with you exactly.
So the, the reason I ask that question is if it was over the winter, I have to assume that we've already received and paid that bill and that's when it came over that dollar amount, the $7,000 or whatever it was, $6,000 something. And it goes to a debit just mentioned. It, we've encumbered a little bit on equipment maintenance, but we still have a balance of $12,204 in that line item. And to say that that one, that item was one of the factors that put us over budget, if you add that money in there, the, it's still in the positive of like $5,000. So it's, it's hard for me to look at a line item and say, well, the unexpected tractor repair is one of the items that put us over, when equipment maintenance still has a positive balance of $12,204. So unless it's not being allocated to the right line items and, or there's some, there's some disparity on how that's being allocated, because I can't find where it was spent. If it was put in equipment maintenance, I'd like to know where it was so we can actually see the deficit in the expenditure report and not just the bullet point on an Excel spreadsheet that says, we didn't anticipate spending that, but we have a line item for $20,000 for unanticipated equipment maintenance. So unless we spent $27,000 to put the $7,000 on there and say that helped put us over, it's disingenuous. It's not. It's within the $20,000 that was allocated to repair equipment. We may not have anticipated the actual tractor, but there's a line item for $20,000 that we have not accounted for.
To accommodate for that.
To accommodate for those unexpected repairs. And that's why they're in there. So unless you're telling me that there is another $20,400, $204 of equipment repair that is pending, that has already been done, that we haven't paid, I'm confused why we even put the tractor in there as something that caused us to go over or caused us to eat up the entire budget. It hasn't. It just hasn't. The line item's there. Now, if we're misappropriating where we're paying funds, and we're paying it out of something, and we're not putting it in the expenditure report, that's an administrative issue. That is not a budgetary issue. That's a, that's a how you are maintaining your budget and documentation issue. That's in-house that you all need to work out very quickly about how we're going to get that rectified. Because it's not here. We're not seeing it. What we're seeing is bullet points on an Excel spreadsheet, and that doesn't fly at town floor.
So can you speak to that?
I think Caitlin needs time to go back and look at the budget and the expenditure reports, and she should come back with an answer that's prepared and not off the cuff this evening, in all fairness.
Well, in all fairness, this is what's on the budget. This is what we are supposed to be on the agenda. This is what we're supposed to be talking about right now. We have several members of the select board here to talk about this and make a plan as to how we're going to deal with this. So this is the meeting that we needed to have, those pieces of information.
Well, she'll get it to you as soon as she can.
No, no, not as soon as you can. We needed it for tonight, okay? That's when we're talking about this, that's when we need the information for. So going forward, we need the information when we're going to be, before we're going to be speaking about it, so that we can educate ourselves on it and be ready to answer questions. And it needs to be clearly articulated in it, in the budget, in the spreadsheet, as, as Scott was mentioning, so that we can see where it came from out of the budget, where the deficits are, instead of an email with just kind of a list, partial, as you pointed out, of the expenditures. So I need to make sure that that, that we're clear on the expectations going forward, so that we are not sitting here once again, not having a clear understanding of what's going on. We're the ones ultimately that are going to have to be dealing with this on town floor. So we need all of the information, so that we have a complete picture going forward of what's happening in this school.
And it was, it was requested several times today, and we didn't get the clarity that we needed via email.
So as the business manager, that is your job. We are, we are directing that to you as, as your job. Please have this information for us clearly spelled out, ahead of our meetings, ahead of when we have to deal with these, so that we can have a clear understanding and a clear picture going forward of what's going on. I don't like looking foolish here, not, not, not knowing these, these bills are here in the middle of May. So I don't want this to happen again.
Quick question, Mike. Go ahead. Just for timeline, when did we realize we were way over budget?
We've been talking to the town since December.
Okay. And how often are we checking the budget since then?
Is the week everybody up there? Just the?
The budget is checked often. Expenditure reports are submitted to the school committee for every meeting.
But we haven't seen the deficit yet. We've always been in the positive, and that's where we are confused. That's why we're feeling kind of blindsided, whereas there had never been a check-in as the email that we got emailed.
I guess the question is, when, when he said this, and what Jen is saying, when you say that you've been talking to the town about our deficit, who's, you and the superintendent or the school board collectively? Because they seem very shocked. Just as a, as a taxpayer, then to know. I'm not sure who's included in the conversation, Jen and I and Ryan Smith. And Lisa have been talking about it, and it is exclusively to the special education transportation tuitionals. So we do not talk about it openly at meetings? That's just here. But you said the town knows about the deficit since December. Yes. But you just said that you've only been talking about the special education portion. So did they really know that there was this huge deficit? It's just about the same. We projected to be $300,000. We projected to be about $338,000 that we had unanticipated expenses. Right now, our projection is that we need about $304,000, so it's very similar to what we had anticipated. Okay, so was you the principal and?
Sure.
Our town administrator. Okay.
Do you want to say something?
Are, are funds being transferred from one line item to another without the school board's?
When you talk about line items, you mean like?
Line item one, is money being transferred from item one to item six without the school board's knowledge?
No, we can't do that. So if the, any transfer that happens would be from revolving funds to the general ledger or the general revolving funds, and those would be sold free.
You know, I guess I will say something. You know, we sat here for about an hour while you guys just beat the hell out of her. And, you know, I've been talked to a few times before a few meetings, asking that I make sure things go smoothly. I think we should do a better child communication here, all the way around from town side to school committee to the business manager. Maybe we're a little confused about some things tonight, but also, you know, you could ask for these things in advance, like you do with all the stack of papers you get. I think there's just a better way of handling this.
So what you didn't see?
Frankly, if I were Caitlin, and I don't, I don't understand everything about it, but I'd be looking for a different place to, to work. And I'm sorry you had to get put through that by folks that didn't even, some of them didn't even know what they're talking about.
There were several emails that went back and forth, and so there's a lot of behind-the-scenes that you all don't see. So there were several requests that were asked for.
I'm just confused, what, what's the amount we're missing?
I think she said she was going to look at the budget, expenditure reports, and get that information back as soon as possible.
All right, let's move on.
Yep.
We've got enough time for this.
Yep. We are going to move on. I just want to say, we are not trying to be mean at any means. We are just trying to get answers. I, I think that we have.
We have the right to answers. The town does. And that's our responsibility.
Right. And in order to make informed decisions, we need to be informed. And when we're not informed, we can't make those informed decisions.
Okay. Move on, please.
Yep, principal report.
I don't know about a principal's report, at least they're unable to be here this evening.
Jen, if you could ask, or relay the message to Lisa to have her report also included in our packet?
We'll do.
Thank you. Budget personnel committee report. Union 28 committee report.
We had a nice meeting last night. That's it. I'll keep it simple.
No details?
No, it was all good. Next meeting, May 27th.
Not till September. That was in error.
Error.
Yeah, September is our next meeting.
Okay. No meeting in June?
We meet quarterly so more times. May was the last.
No old business on here? Does anybody feel that there should be? Are we missing anything? Okay. New business, school of choice, we need to take a vote on that.
We have to vote to accept the FY24. Um, we have to vote to accept the FY '24 amended and voted by town Irving Elementary School budget. Even though it's voted by the town, it needs a vote to accept by the school committee.
Are you saying, before we do the vote of school choice?
Well, it's, it's the first bullet. I guess whatever you want to do, but I didn't want to skip over it. You do have to vote to accept.
Oh, that's not on ours.
It's not on my agenda as a bullet or updated one. So that's why I...
I handed out new budgets.
New agendas?
And I left new agendas. I'm sorry.
This is the one with my name on it, and it does not have...
That didn't have your name on it? I brought it this evening.
Okay, well, then I don't...
They were all on the table. I put them down at the table, so there should be some.
Okay. Let's see. FY '24 amended and voted by town of Irving School budget. Okay. We need to vote to accept the budget that was amended on the town floor and voted at school, at, I keep saying school meeting, at town meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Um, so that's with the operating budget of now $3,438,939. Just double-check my numbers, make sure I'm speaking to the right one. Or, I'm sorry, or do we want the FY '24?
The $4,580,000.
Oh, FY '24. Yep. See, those are my...
What's the number? I'll make a motion to accept that number you just read.
Ask for a second.
Yep, we need a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I don't think we can change anything, so it's a formality to adopt it.
Yep.
Making sure.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let me compare and contrast those, make sure that we are now on the same page here. Okay, so now we're up to school of choice.
Yes. Yes, it was. Thank you.
I didn't, I'm glad you heard that, because I didn't hear. So we're up to the school of choice vote.
Tonight, you vote to choose to either be a school of choice or not a school of choice.
Do you have any information from Lisa?
I do not.
Last time, we knew that there were open seats in fifth and sixth grade.
Correct.
But I'll make a motion not to accept, not to accept school choice.
I'll second that.
We can have discussion.
Hmm?
So we can have discussion.
Mm-hmm. Yep. No, there's a second, so we can certainly discuss that.
Without having information from the principals, a little bit hard to have a discussion.
I just feel that if we're saying our peer, per pupil cost is 33,000 right now, and if we take a child in, we're only getting 5,000, and we don't know what other costs that child could bring with them, to me, I, I don't see the pros outweighing the cons and other things that could happen during that opportunity of allowing a child in. So I think that we have a lot that we need to work on internally and, and support the children that we do have here, and find ways to make that happen before offering out more open seats to accept more children.
That would actually bring our per pupil cost down if we were to accept.
But we're not getting much. Like, like...
Right, but we're not adding teachers. That's the thing. You know what I mean?
But we could be adding huge needs.
We could be.
And you don't know.
The advantage is also that it's, if we did like sixth grade, you know, they age out right away. Like, we're not, we don't own them for...
Six or seven years.
Right. I just, yeah. I don't know. I think there's a lot going on here that...
Yep.
Uh, there's, you know, a lot of unknowns with that, and, um, yeah. So just throwing that out there.
Any other discussion about that?
Those are good points, so.
Okay. No further discussion. We'll go ahead and vote then. So the motion is to not accept school choice. So a yes vote would be to not accept school choice, just to be clear. Okay. So all in favor of not accepting school choice, say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Nay.
Okay. That's it, everybody. All right. Um, withdrawal from Union 28 discussion. We received an email from a towns person who had wanted to be here tonight but couldn't, so put his thoughts down in, in paper. I think, I think there are copies, right? Okay. So if people in the audience wanted to follow along?
We don't have it.
I'll give you a minute just to double-check.
Can I ask Caitlin a budget question?
Sure.
Okay. Just while everyone's...
Yeah, go ahead and do that now.
Caitlin, can I just have a, I just have a quick question that has really nothing to do with what we were talking about, but clarifying staffing question. And Jen, if this is better for you. But I sent an email at the beginning of April, and I know there was a lot going on, but about who monitors grant opportunities. And I saw that there's a Jennifer Spofford, whose title is Student Support Services and Grant Coordinator. Is that the person that is like tracking, like, I know recently within the state and the budget for next year, they are like releasing a lot of ECE money. I know it's more for like EEC, but like when stuff like that is happening, is that on her radar, or is that something that us as a school committee need to say, like specifically, can you look into this? I just wanna make sure that we're on top of it, if that's our job to initiate, or knowing that someone is looking at that, like that's wonderful too. So just a clarification question there.
So Jen Spofford doesn't necessarily look for grant opportunities. She more manages grants.
Okay.
But grants are sort of specific to, so when...
Yeah.
Brands, we've written, our service directors are the ones that are monitoring and getting emails and looking at applying for, for grants. If there's grants that are specific to early childhood, Gilly would be the one to, to look for those grants.
And she's looking for, like, early, just this early childhood, we'll throw that out there. Because she's not necessarily an early childhood coordinator, she has some other grant funding that she is in charge of, and, and I know she's had other roles added to her position as like the CFCE coordinator, but does she, is she aware that like that's part of her role to keep her eye out for additional funding that would support our preschool classrooms versus support her as the CFCE coordinator?
I would have to ask her specifically, but I guess she does look for the, for the early childhood up until preschool, and I believe there's some components of preschool, but I have to ask her.
Okay. And is all of that through COMBYS? Or...
Well, now there's going to be, and they're facing in a new grants platform called GEMS.
Okay.
They're still using EdGrants, GEMS, and COMBY. So one of those three. And there is no specific grants person. We all keep an eye out for possible grants.
Okay. Is there a specific, like, link or thing, like, something that we could keep our eyes on to helpful?
I think if you look on Desi's pages...
Just go there. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
If you do see something, you know, we're more than happy to look into it.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Are we all set in the audience? Did you guys find what you needed?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay. All right. So back to the discussion. There was a, a request to have this on the agenda, withdrawal, excuse me, a withdrawal from Union 28. Again, an email came through with some thoughts on, they are for doing this, and unfortunately, this person couldn't be there, here tonight, but did send along some pretty comprehensive information. So we're gonna open it up for discussion tonight. Does anybody have any thoughts on the board that they would like to share?
I'm still reading it. I just need a minute.
All right. So, so maybe I'll just share my thoughts, because I've already read it. I think some of the points that are made are interesting points, and I think it is something that has been talked about in the town. I know that there is another town near us, Warwick, that just did this. And so I think it's an interesting idea.
I think the idea had been brought up 10 years ago, too. I think when Leverett and Chutesbury were possibly going to regionalize with Amherst.
Amherst, yeah.
So the conversation has been had in the past.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Reading the points for why this person wants to bring it up, I, maybe I don't understand the infringement or the errors and the weight they carry, but it seems like just clerical and usual administrative errors that you see at any job. So I'm not really capturing the whole gravity, except for the budget thing, which I think we've talked enough about. But for the other points, I'm really not seeing the huge points, especially because that point about the budget wasn't part, I'm assuming, of the original request since this, since the agenda for this was already released, probably before he asked to put it on there. So that's just one extra. But I, I don't see the gravity for all these, for all these things.
Yeah, so I, I'd kinda like to look at this as more of like a, like a global idea rather than specifically to what this particular person was suggesting is the reasons why. He's not...
This person was the one that brought it motion to the floor. I wanna talk about his points first, about how it doesn't carry a lot of weight for me. So what's, what are the pros, what are the cons, I guess, and beyond this, I really don't think this, these eight, nine points really carry a lot of gravity, so carry a lot of weight. Sorry.
Yeah. My, my, my only response to that is just simply because the person's not here to respond to your questions. It's hard for us to, to know what his thinking was, you know, more than what's on this paper. But if there's discussions just in general about the idea of it, I would, you know, I'd like to hear those as well. There was...
I would like to understand pros and cons from your point of view, from the superintendent's point of view, from the principal's point of view, and anybody else who has a point of view, pros and cons. Because I don't wanna just hear on one side, this is good, this is bad. I really wanna have a collective, these are the pros, these are the cons. I don't know if there's an outside third-party resource that can provide us some insight as well. But from what I understand, the town spent a year and a half, two years, going through a long, drenched process to accomplish this. So do the benefits, are they worth it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Good question.
He did, he did provide us with a chart of like a possible financials. It looks like, based on his projections, that it would be like $120,000 savings. I don't know, I don't know if it could be done based on what he projected. I think that there's a deeper conversation that needs to happen.
I would echo what Jen had to say. This, this will be a pretty significant discussion. It seems like the town uses, what's it, Collins Center for a lot of things that when they're looking to do different management type things, or I could articulate that better. This is a bigger, like, this seems like this is a big conversation, a lengthy conversation, and something that we would want to use some outside consultation for. I would also just like to clarify, the situation in Warwick is radically different than this. Warwick did not choose to leave their district. They would have loved to have stayed a school in the Pioneer District. Pioneer Valley Regional School District closed that school because the population was too low. They closed that, and they closed, I believe it was Lyden. So that is the only reason they became their own district. It's a very, very different situation. I've never heard of any other, I'm not saying I'm, excuse me, for or against it. I just, to use that as a comparison is, is not the way to go. They, they did that because they were effectively closed. So it'd be interesting to see where the school districts have done this, and I think that's where a consultant would be very helpful if anyone were to really move forward in this discussion.
Yeah, I don't think the expectation of, I mean, I'll speak for myself and anybody who's differing the opinion. I don't think the idea was that we were gonna come to some conclusion tonight. It was just opening the door to this discussion. And I agree, different. Warwick certainly is different, but it is somebody nearby who is doing it. So it would be interesting to talk to them and see the reasons why they did it is different, but how are they doing it? How are they accomplishing it? How are they going to be successful in it? So just a neighbor that we can easily reach out to.
I suggest we table it till next month and get some more information.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything before we table it that they wanna add, or questions they wanna ask for next time, so we might be ready for it?
I guess I was gonna say, is the primary reason behind money, or is there other possible reasons? I mean, I think there are some people mentioned that it might give school committee more power over what happens versus the situation where you're in. I don't know if that's part of it, but if it is, is that part of the reason why they wanna do this? Just, just a question to ask.
Okay. Yeah. Good, good question.
I guess to add, if the school committee gets more power over control or authority over the school, where's the checks and balance for that?
Yeah. So I think, I mean, if I can speak, I think just slightly to that. I think the idea was, the way that our union is set up, our superintendent, our business manager, our, uh, it's not sped director, it's...
Director of Student Support.
Director of Student Support. Thank you. I knew it wasn't, but I didn't have, they're all shared with the other towns. So if any changes needed or wanted to be made, the other towns would have to agree. It wouldn't be as simple, we've decided to make this change to that structure, and we can move forward with it. Other towns, because we share those, those departments, they have to agree to make those changes. And if we became our own single district school and didn't share those departments with other towns, then it would be easier to make any sort of changes we wanted to make, needed to make to that sort of structure. So I think that's part of what the thought was about this idea, only a small part. But that's where that comes in, that power, if you will. I don't really like that word, but, you know, we, we would have more ability to make changes, the school committee would have more ability to make those changes than right now, because right now, we'd have to also get the other schools.
Can you give some examples of what those structures the union will control over?
What I think structural, buildings, facilities.
Um, so the superintendent, the business manager, the director of people services. Those would be under the purview of the Irving School Committee solely, instead of being shared with the other schools. Say, for instance, we wanted to change who was doing those jobs or how we structured those jobs. That would be something that the school committee could change. Whereas right now, because we share those structured, those departments with other schools, the other schools also have to agree to make the changes with us. It's a much more lengthy process, and doesn't necessarily mean it would go the way that we, Irving, wanted it to go. But if we, if we own them ourselves, then we could make any of those changes that we saw fit. Does that clarify?
To clarify, the school committee supervises the superintendent, but the superintendent supervises the director of finance and operations, the director of student support services.
And the principal.
Correct. And the principals.
So like if...
Okay. I'll just, can I just throw a quick example?
Yeah.
If we wanted to get rid of her, okay, I'd have to go, we would have to go to the other four school committees. It would have to be a vote. If we didn't have that, we could just say, bye. You know, it's, it's, it's...
So like Gil Montague, you know, for example, their school committee is, has that over their superintendent. They don't have to go talk, because that school, all of those schools fall within that district. They don't have to go ask Gil, or go ask Hillcrest, or go ask Sheffield. Like that, their school committee is the one that kinda governs all of their schools within their district, where ours is unique, where we govern our school. But because we have that shared responsibility at that administration level, in order to make any bigger decisions within that structure, we need to get that vote, like Eric was saying, with the other schools to make that decision. So we can't, so that's where that... So, we can't, so that's where that, like, it wouldn't be any more power than like a tip, you know, what a typical school committee looks like with their buildings. Um, ours is just very unique, because our district shares responsibilities at like the admin level, but then it has the independent level within each school, and it's all broken down and stuff. So, that's where that kind of, I think, comparison is with some of that. Um, and like, I think another example is, we vote on a Union 28 budget. That has to be voted from members from each of the school committees within Union 28 to approve that. Like, us at Irving don't necessarily have a say or not, like, we have to go to those supervisory committee meetings, um, or joint committee meetings, and, and come together. So, then when we come back and look at this budget, and we're making adjustments or changes, I think at one point, there was a part where we're like, okay, well, Union 28 has already been voted on, we can't change that. So, when we were looking to move money around, we can't change that, because that had already been voted on by that joint committee that shares all of those costs. Does that answer some of that? Okay.
So, if, if you're looking to gain that type of, yeah, I don't like the word power, maybe authority, control, ownership, ownership is probably the word, what criteria or threshold would be looked for to make a change? Like, what would be some deficiencies that would cause you to go through the motions to say, we want a new superintendent?
I mean, I think that would just have to do with, um, I, I, it could, it could be any number of things. I don't, I don't, off the top of my head, I would say just, you know, job performance, like any other employee. Are they, are they doing the job that we hired them to do? But there could be many other reasons for that.
We just got, we just got this, you know, a couple of weeks ago, so, I mean, this is why I want to table it and, 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 um, research.
I think Devin is looking to the school committee for a little bit more guidance. A lot of you have been on the school committee for a while. We're just the parents that are trying to figure out what's going on. We don't know all the ins and outs, and I think we're looking for guidance from you guys and your input as to what are the benefits of doing this. A lot of you, I mean, I wish God was here because you have some input, but, you know, we don't know. We're just, I don't want to say laymen in this pool, but we don't know all the ins and outs. So, we're, I think, am I wrong, Devin, you're looking for guidance?
No, yeah, looking for guidance, and I might not be at the next meeting, which is why I'm asking the questions now, so that hopefully you can potentially answer these questions later.
Yeah.
Because I assume, you know, like you said, that I mean, their, their job expectations. I would assume there's going to be a coaching opportunity with written documentation of the bullet points worth improvements needed before you have a termination or a replacement. You know, I assume there's going to be a process set up for the committee in general, so that you can be held accountable to following it before making a drastic change.
Yeah, that's all, I mean, that's all contractually figured out, and, you know, those steps are generally put into an employment contract as to exactly how that works. And that, sure, that would all be thought of, yep.
And the state of Massachusetts requires like, um, oh goodness, not surveys, yeah, you, like.
Evaluations?
Yeah, there we go, yeah. So, they require, like, us to do evaluations of certain things, and they require certain documentation and paperwork, and, and due diligence around all of that. So, it, it's not something that we could just, like, decide tomorrow, like, yeah, you're done, because we don't, you know, whatever. There has to be a lot of, like, backup documentation, paperwork, you know, um, this, yes, yes.
Is there a timeline that you would have to give Union 28 to ask to leave? Or can you just leave at your own discretion?
So, there, I, I can speak a little bit to it. There is a process, um, relative to leaving a superintendency union, and so, um, any district that leaves a superintendency union would need to get approval from DESI around their administrative services, business services, administrative coverage, et cetera. And so, um, it, it could be at least a year, if not more, that this whole entire process could occur.
Everything's a process.
You'll be dealing with the state, of course.
Alright, so, good questions. We will work on getting some, um, answers to the best of our ability, and we will table this, uh, or bring this back up for discussion in June.
Isn't that just a discussion? Or, like, we both, like, you said in June.
Say it again, three G, I'm sorry.
When do we do discussion in February, June?
Yeah, at our next meeting, yeah.
And, and that would just be discussion again, right?
I think so, I think, yeah.
Well, something that was brought to the town, um, in the town meeting a long time ago, that they had requested that we have a town forum prior to any decision that we make as a school committee.
Yeah, by no means are we.
Absolutely, no, this, the school committee does have the final vote, but there, there would absolutely be a town discussion. There's way more that has to be done and discussed before any decisions are made.
If your question is, are we doing this in June, and that's that, then no.
No.
Yeah, absolutely.
We are, no, 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 again, lengthy process. Okay, so surplus equipment, it sounds like we have some surplus metal that would like to be deemed surplus. Jen, can you speak to this? Do you know what this is?
No, I don't have any information. Typically, we have to put a dollar amount on it too, I thought.
I'm curious what this metal is, so, I'm. I don't know, no, I thought we already deemed that surplus. They were asking about the, the.
Yeah.
You were talking about the kitchens, the kitchen stuff, right?
We already did that.
We already deemed that.
We already did that.
Yeah, we did that a few months ago.
Anybody want it?
What? I know, right? I know. Send my son over, he'll scrap it. Um, so, not having all the information on this, I, I really don't know that we'll take a vote on this. We'll wait till June?
Fair.
Just, I mean. Um, so that brings up the pie report.
We just did bingo for bucks a couple of weeks ago. It wasn't a great turnout, but it was definitely a good start. We had a few families come, the kids had a great time. Ms. Pat was a fabulous bingo caller. But it was a good start, we got an idea of things that we'd like to do in the future, and how to go about it. We got all the snacks were donated by the parents, which fabulous show of everybody. We definitely used your help. And then staff appreciation, same thing. We set up lunch, snacks, and breakfast this past week for everybody. And we just finished the Irving apparel, and we're hopefully going to open it one more time before the end of the year.
Thanks for doing that.
Nice.
We went to bingo for boys, and the boys had a lot of fun, so.
I know, I wish I had known about it. And Ms. George was writing the numbers on the board, so we knew which numbers were called, because as you can imagine, young children and bingo boards, that if you just shake it, they all, you know, disappear. Um, and Ms. Pat was calling, and, um, even the, a lot of the children got involved, and they were really excited to be there. And, um, in their defense, it rained all week up until that Friday, where it was probably the most beautiful day we had seen in a week. So, um, to, you know, come inside, I, I'm sure, you know, maybe people would have been there if it.
I think it was baseball also.
Oh, baseball, yeah, because there was some scheduling of games, yeah. So, no, I agree, it was definitely a great event, so thank you for putting that on.
Um, could you add, at, at least me, to your email list, just so that I can see?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
You know, I heard about it, but only heard about it afterwards, and I would love to just know that.
Oh, is there an active email list?
I think we just do dojo and Facebook right now.
Okay.
I mean, we could send you, like, the link.
It's in the newsletter.
In the newsletter, we usually put it, stuff in the newsletter.
Do you get the newsletter?
We do not get the newsletter, no, I'd like to get the newsletter.
I think we just have to tell Pat or Jen.
Yeah, because I think at the beginning of the year, we just add our email if we wanted it as an email, so that should be an easy add.
Yeah, so I can add you for pie stuff and then.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks. But I'll do it again. Um, alright, so that's, uh, brings us, that's the end of new business, policy review and update. We have the policies, first read on several, and then the second read on several, um.
I'd like to table these if we could. Um, I just would like to, to meet together collaboratively, just to kind of talk about. I know that we, we tried to, but we just had so much budget stuff going on.
Yep.
That we weren't able to go ahead and meet and discuss.
Yep.
Would you be open to meeting with, with Brian, so that we can kind of review those?
Yeah, I already got feedback from Brian, but if you want to meet again, I certainly can.
Okay, okay, yeah, I, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I emailed, um.
We did, we did get it, yeah, we did get his, his, his feedback, but I, I think it would be.
Yeah, in March, we got his feedback.
Yeah, if we could meet together, great.
No problem, just let me know when I.
Alright, so let's table this until our next meeting.
The first read and second read?
Um, yes, because I want to make sure that, um, that's all been gone over. Um, and then, so that brings us to, to the end.
Do we have a schedule set for next year's school committee meetings?
I don't know.
Can we? We don't?
Pardon me?
It does not sound like it. Do we have a meeting schedule for next year for school committee meetings? Okay, can we get that for next meeting? Or at least, I think, I, I guess where I'm coming from with this is, this past year, our first meeting wasn't until September, well into September, and it felt like we, there was a lot that was going on. And so, I guess I just wanted to throw that out there of like, when first meeting would be, and, and see if, how we feel about that, or if we're feeling with as much as that has gone on this year, um, if we need to, you know, have a couple more, because I know it was every other, but then I felt like we were just making up meetings here and there, and every other week. Um, and would some of that have been diminished if we just had a regular meeting scheduled each month? So, I.
I agree.
Just throwing that out there, um, don't want to talk about it and have it be a discussion and tabled until next year. Like, if we're having a meeting in June, if we can have somewhat of an idea of a set schedule, and make sure that we are ahead of the game and being proactive and not reactive to stuff that we're hearing now.
So, would you like to have, at our June meeting, create that schedule?
Or at least have the first couple worked out, or making a decision on it, do we want it monthly for the first quarter? Then bi-monthly, because, you know, holidays and stuff come up, and then back to monthly because of budget seasons? Like, I, I just think that we should just be thoughtful and intentional about when we're meeting.
So, I can bring forward the monthly schedule, the Thursday, Tuesday of everyone, and then we can either vote to accept the monthly schedule or.
Okay.
Have a further discussion, but I'll have Pam prepare one for it.
Okay, that works, thank you. Alright, so, um, before we close this meeting, I just want to make sure everybody knows that our next meeting is Tuesday, June 20th at 7:00 PM. And there is a policy meeting ahead of that, you all are welcome to come to that.
That wasn't since September.
Oh, oh, sorry.
We don't have policy till September.
Yep, yep, I, as soon as it came out, I read it. Um, sorry, so the policy is, will be September 19th at 6:00 PM, so, scratch my idea about that. Um, we are going to move into executive session. Um, we feel like we're going to come back to open meeting?
No, we're not.
It's up to you.
Um, well, I'm just.
Are we still, are we still discussing that topic yet?
I'd like to say we're not coming back to open session.
Okay, up to you, Rachel.
Yeah. Alright, so we're going to go into, um, executive session, not to return to open session. That means we won't come back to do, um, to you all, so you're free to go home. So, in accordance with the meeting law, chapter 7, uh, 30A, section 21A, move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation without returning to open session, so we have to roll call vote that?
Aye.
Need a little aye?
Aye, Corny?
Bailey, aye.
Are you inviting anyone else into the meeting?
Is that the only reason that was on the agenda?
That was the plan, right? Are we, do you have, you don't have any more information on that topic, correct? I received information today. You did today, okay, okay.
Could you invite the superintendents?
Um, yeah, so we'll invite the superintendent then.
And do you need any financial information?
I don't know, did we?
Well, it, it is a financial decision.